Good evening, everybody. It is Monday, February 5th, 2024, 6:00 PM. And I'll call to order the Free Town Board Selecting Meeting. This meeting will be recorded and will be available on the town's YouTube page. Tonight, we will be going into executive session and then coming back into open session. We will be going into executive session for the following reason. Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A1, to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health, rather than professional competence of an individual, or discuss the discipline or dismissal of, or complaints, or charges against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to go to executive session.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Selectman Loebz?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. We're now in executive session. Okay, we are now back in open session from executive session. I'm gonna move on to agenda item two. So this is discussion and vote whether approve but not release the executive session minutes from 1/29/2024. So without, I'll entertain a motion to approve but not release those executive session minutes.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna abstain from that, just because I wasn't there.
Roger that.
Okay, and then moving on to agenda item three. This is discussion of vote whether approve the open session minutes from 1/29/2024. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the open session minutes from 1/29/2024.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm abstaining. Aye?
Aye.
Okay. All right, agenda item four is discussion and vote on additional drop box for document collection at the East Free Town location. And so, I know we got some feedback on this. Cheryl, are you here regarding this as well?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. So just make sure you get a, you have a microphone, you're good. So I don't know who wants to kick off this conversation.
I'll start. So, a couple months ago, maybe sessions ago, a town resident came up to us during one of our meetings and asked for a drop box location on the east side of Free Town, right? And I thought it was a good idea. We put it on the agenda, we discussed it. We spoke to different department heads, they gave us some feedback. Last week, Jared and I discussed it and to get an email out to all the department heads to see how their office would be impacted pro or con with an additional drop box. And you can see from the email responses, you know, mixed bag, you know? So we're here to discuss it and I'm sure Cheryl has a couple, a couple things to say regarding her end of the house. So, yeah, here we are.
Please, Cheryl.
Hi, thank you so much. Cheryl Astral, it's town clerk. So when Carlos, I believe we, you touched base with me back in December at the luncheon. We talked about briefly about an additional one, drop box. So initially, my thought process is it's always better to try to make town government and town hall accessible to our residents. But that being said, you have to think about each, every office individually and what the expectations and deadlines and things like that of that nature are for those specific offices. So I know speaking strictly for town clerk and elections, there's certain caveats. So we have, the drop box was mandated with the Votes Act of 2022, but it came into fruition before that due to pandemic. So it was like a temporary legislation that was put in. Along with that was it had to be monitored 24/7. So that drop box is monitored. There are two outside of town hall because one has to be strictly for ballots. So my primary focus is elections because I have deadlines. I have strict legislation and laws that I have to abide by. So then we talked about, well, what's another place that could be monitored 24/7? Well, that's the police station. Now, not only that, it's, now you have someone who has to logistically come and pick up the ballots. And this is where my concern lies. Because on election day, I have up until 8:45 in order to have those ballots brought into town hall, checked in through the state system, and then logistically driven up to the polling location to have them processed through the tab later. That's a huge time crunch. So I did put a survey out to my fellow clerks around the state. I have all the documentation here. I have three towns that responded that they have more than one drop box. And it was Arlington with 46,000 residents, they have two drop boxes. Franklin with 33,000 residents, two drop boxes. And Marlborough with 41,000. So our population right now is 92,060. That's why I federally have to quote voters in town, I have 7,200. So while it is a benefit, I think, having an additional drop box, not for elections, I don't think it's, I don't think it's feasible. I'm gonna run into issues, I'm gonna run into votes not being able to count, and then I'm gonna have the state come down on us because those are strict deadlines. Now, if it was a general, like depository of just general paperwork, I would be for it, right? Because you're, you're making it more accessible to the town residents. However, what if they get confused? And as much signage as you put out there, as much publicity, as many videos as we do, one calls, things still happen. And that would be my concern. That would be my concern is how are we going to stop the confusion? Now, with election ballots, some folks don't trust the mail, or they prefer not putting it through the mail. So they could drop it off in the drop box down at town hall. But those ballots are now with the Votes Act. The state pays for the return postage back to the elections office. So in essence, it's really them just, you know, going out to their driveway and putting the ballot back in their own mailbox with a little flag for the post person to pick up. So, you know, they're gonna waste more gas dropping it off. I just, I don't see how we can, with deadlines, the way that they are when it comes to elections, I don't see how adding another drop box is not going to confuse them. Because even with my white one that's out there, clearly, town clerk, elections on it, drop ballots here, sometimes I get, you know, other mail. But it's as quick as just delivering it, but to, you know, to try to beat the clock, you know? And it's not like I can have someone man to pull someone off the polls to watch that drop box. The polls, everyone has a specific duty there. And then I'm just concerned, you know, what happens if it's 8:15 or 8:10 and they're there? Let's say if the drop box was here, you know, my brain goes right to, well, this could happen. What if, what's the worst case scenario? You know, and what happens if someone, if someone gets into an accident and those ballots are now on Slabbards Road? I'm responsible for that. Any which way you cut it, the chief elections official is responsible. So I just think having a ballot, a specific ballot drop off, an additional drop off box, I wouldn't be in favor of that. I am in favor of making a government accessible to our town residents. But how do we lessen the confusion? And that's where we're at. Specifically with my, now that's just looking through my lens. I don't know about anybody else's lens. But I'm a little selfish here with me just logistically trying to, trying to do it. Like if it was census, I know I have the drop box that's here that, but I'm the one who's cleaned that out three times. And I think I had five pieces of mail. We've, we've, in the past few years, I think we've made it so convenient for folks. You have the online payments, you have email, we have dedicated email boxes, we have the drop boxes, in person, regular mail. I don't know if we need something else.
That's fair. Well, first and foremost, thank you for taking our, our general conversation from two months ago and doing the research you said you were gonna do. And kind of the answer we, we expected for the election side of the house. It's more logistical nightmare than it is, it is convenient for the say our residents, but it seems like.
I'm trying to do things within the letter of the law as well.
Sure, absolutely. And that's what we want.
And that constraint is that timeframe, if it was something like, oh, that I could get my reporting done by 9:30, okay, that gives me about an hour and a half, let's say. But with the amount of ballots that come in, the different ways to apply for a ballot, and different ways that ballots can come in and get delivered. You know, you have your specially qualified voters, you have your UOCABs, you have your overseas military. There's, I joke around and I shouldn't joke, but I do joke, you know? All that's left is for me to go around knocking door to door and say, here, fill out a ballot and put it in my box. I'll take it with me because we've made it so accessible, which is a great thing.
I'll go with you if you need help. More people voting is the way to go.
Yeah, we've seen that.
Our dream, right, I think we share it, 7,200 voters, 7,200 votes come in.
Yeah.
Nightmare logistically, sure, but that'd be awesome, the whole town voting, so.
Well, we're at 9:48 as of 3 o'clock this afternoon, just of vote by mail applications that came in. So they can do online applications, they can do paper applications and those lovely postcards that I've already talked about. We've been processing those, so. It's a lot, it's a lot, which is good.
Yeah.
It's doing what it's supposed to do.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, that is, and then I, I wanna do this if we're gonna do it at a way that makes it as easy for the residents as possible, right? But it's like, at the same time, we have to think about what makes sense for you all as well. And it just doesn't sound like it's, it's feasible from your side. I just think, to your point, there's so many other options of ways for people to vote or to put their census and all this different stuff, so.
My main concern is the ballots, the census, you know, this, this time to process that. And that's not such a time constraint, but my fear would be someone dropped a ballot in and we, you know, we didn't get it on time. How can you tell a voter your vote didn't count, or I can't count your vote? Because it was a logistical nightmare on our side.
You brought up a good point, right? You put all the signage in the world and people don't pay attention to signage, it's awful. I mean, you know, so that's the other part is we have to think about if we're gonna do this is what we effectively put on there before it just looks like it was a ton of words and no one pays attention to them because sometimes too much is, you know, it's too much. It's just, everyone just skim right over it. They look for the big bold print.
Right, or like Cheryl saying, right, you clearly have two drop boxes at town hall.
Yeah.
Distinctively physically different, right? Different colors, letters, and then you see still getting people's mails. And I'm sure the other way around as well. I'm sure people probably just grab the mail. They're in their car, they're just quickly dropping it off in one handful, so it'll go in the same place, who cares? Which is, I get it. So yeah, elections, we don't wanna, I don't want any scrutiny from elections at any point from point A to point B, adding a C, your scenario on Bullock Road, yeah, we don't want that. General box, it does sound like you're impartial to it, right?
Correct. So general, so general box, yeah, you know, it makes it easier for folks, you know, especially some of the elderly who may not have a vehicle, who are right next door, maybe have to see away a couple of days a week. But how do we, the question for me is how do we stop the confusion?
Yeah, yeah. No, that's one thing we discussed last week was signage. If there is something out there, signage, you know, and some of the comments from the other department heads as well, we have to have pretty clear cut signage as far as what, what's that thing, what's that there for, right? Timeframes, deadlines, and.
Red siren if they put a ballot in, no, no stop.
No ballots allowed, no ballots allowed.
Not allowed.
But one of the other things I also think about is it's easier, the easiest thing for someone who lives on this side of town, if they're paying their tax bills, to put it in the mail, right? So this only would affect, in my eyes, would only affect the person who's trying to hurry up and pay it because the bill's due on the first and it's the 31st, right? And they wanna get it in before they're penalized.
But those tax bills, they get put through the lockbox out in Reuben, don't they? Isn't that where it's addressed too?
Yeah, I think it is.
So either way.
Yeah, they have to get pushed out there, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I don't know, I don't see the juice worth the squeeze, really. But what I'm seeing right now to, hopefully this is a non-issue someday and we have a centrally located town hall. Right? Like, that's the really, the real root of the problem here is that our town hall is located geographically far from most of our residents, or a big chunk of our residents, right? So, I don't know. I just, I can see that, I tend to agree with you, Cheryl, I can see that this could cause confusion and I just don't know if it's, if it's worth it.
That's been my, my gripe since the beginning is, is I want to do, as someone who grew up on this side of town, I keep saying it, right? So I know what they're saying, someone's saying, exactly, right? To have to drive from this side of town over to there, it's not convenient, but.
Feels very long, like a long road.
So if there's tractors out there, you know, some horses running around, it takes some time.
Yeah, I don't know. I just worry about even if it makes sense for a department to get that paperwork, how we effectively do it, who's picking it up, when they're picking it up, how often they're picking it up.
Yeah.
Yeah, but like I said last week, and I'll say it again, like, those are, some deadlines we can't change, right? The assessors and things like that, but late fees and certain bills, we could waive fees for. At the end of the day, we can, we make the rules that we can modify, say, hey, if you are late and you dropped it off, you know, are we gonna charge you the $2 on Monday? Or I know someone was, was worried about interest on the water bill last week, right, as an example. But, you know, this is why we put it to a vote and discuss it and weigh pros and cons.
I need to pay my water bill, thank you.
Well, that's why we have that verbiage too, now I put on the outside of my return envelopes with the census, do not include any tax payments or water payments. And sometimes they still use my envelope because, you know, when you're sending out 4,500 and you've got 3,000 coming back at you and manually physically opening them all up, sometimes we're a little late and if there's, you know, it's not so much now, it used to be a concern years ago. But I think too, as time goes on and people get used to it, okay, it's gotta go into a separate department. You know, there's two people opening all this mail, I better not send my excise tax payment or my water bill payment because it may not get to that department in time.
Cheryl, just curious, you said you reached out to Arlington, like a bunch of towns, right? Arlington, Franklin.
I did a survey across, so I picked the ones that have two boxes and what their population was. And then Arlington had the two, I thought it was three, but they had the two with the 46,000 residents. But I guess they're like an oddly shaped town. So it was on one side to the other, but I have, I have different figures if you need them. I may not have the exact town you're looking for, but I can try and check.
Well, I was thinking about a workaround to the, to the issue, right? The issue, the request was to get mail from East Free Town to town hall. Do those towns, maybe you can reach out to them again, ask them another question. Do they have any type of mail service with the post office that any town business is free of charge? Not to say free, but is there a working relationship between the town and post office that says, hey, if you see a tax bill come in, please deliver to the town hall? They're going there anyways. Sometimes towns work with the local post office?
Yeah, I know, I work, I was just actually just had this conversation out in the hallway with Margaret. Because I'm in the Asona Post Office at least three to four times a week after work, trying to get things out. So they know when they're, you know, if I have ballots or I'm waiting for certain things, they know to push it through for me or get it quick. Or they'll, on election day as well, they'll call me and say, hey, I've got some ballots here. We're not gonna wait until tomorrow morning because I know you need them tonight. They came in the afternoon truck or what have you. So I can certainly reach out to those towns there and see if they have. I know a lot of the town clerks have working relationships with their post office, but I do know this that, you know, I always say years ago, right? Been here so long, I feel like a old piece of furniture. But, you know, now everything has to go through that central Providence posting facility? So where we used to have, it does, it's, it's so odd. Because I could have in town hall, someone with a P.O. box, Asona Bay Shores, I'll physically bring it down at 4:30 to the post office before they close at 4:45. And it's gotta go all the way to Providence and then all the way back. And when it comes back, they're gonna put it in the slot for the P.O. box, that's right there. When, when years ago, it would have been just like, all right, cancel the stamp, I'll put it in their P.O. box. It's taking a minimum of three days. But all of that has to be accounted for and the town clerks. Yeah, the Town Clerks Association Massachusetts and the EAC, they've been working with the, the federal postmasters because, you know, vote by mail is not anything new for us. It's not new for anybody else, it's newer for us, but we've been doing it for so many years. And there are kinks in the system. But then they know, you know, I, when I send over my trays of ballots, I have to have special green tags because that stuff's gotta, they know that they have to push it through, whether it gets to the facility and the sorting facility, they know they've gotta push that stuff through, so. But yes, to answer your question, I will certainly reach back out to them and see if they have any ideas or suggestions or.
Yeah, even if we have, like, put like in a town envelope, right? Like it says, a town of Free Town on it, and then it gets dropped off somewhere, you know? Just trying to figure out a way to make sure we get everything back. I know we're doing a lot already, right? From online, from videos, like, I think with the town of Free Town does an amazing job getting information out. I think that might be one last step we can take to say, hey, maybe we can work with the mail off, the mail department and say, hey, something comes in, please send it to town hall.
Right, I think the only, the only caveat there is you're dealing with the federal government. And they've got their rules and their procedures that they have to follow too, so. You know, I gotta say the Asona, and I'm sure the East Free Town Post Office as well, Colleen over there. But like I said, I frequent the Asona Post Office. They do try to, try to accommodate me when needed. But I don't know, I don't know what the answer is.
If you could just ask the question, see if they, if they have anything that we can, you know, copy and paste into our town and maybe it'll work for us as well, so, you know, anything we can do.
All right, so I think we'll hold on this for now. I think, yeah, I think we definitely need some more information and it doesn't seem like the right thing to do at this moment, but we'll figure it out. All right, so I'll move on to agenda item five. This is discussion of vote on percentage of town contribution towards retirees supplemental insurance. Deb, you wanna fill us in here?
Yeah, so as we're doing budgets and I've always been, you know, the insurance, the cost of the town for health insurance is, you know, extremely high. One of the things that came up is that we are paying 95% towards the retirees supplemental health insurance premium. That's the supplemental, when they're, they turn 65, they have to go on Medicare. But there's a supplemental policy that still is covered through the town. And it's not like the other policies, you know, 75, 25, we're paying 95% of that. So in conversation with Joe Fair, the town employment leader, he said that's like against the law for us to be paying that amount towards their, their supplemental health insurance premium. And it does, you know, we pay about $30,000 a month for the supplemental premiums for the retirees. But tonight, after rereading his notes to me, he, he says the town needs to adopt Mass General Law 32B, Section 9A or 9E, and that will drive what we charge the retirees. 9A would say that we would charge on them like 50% and 9E will give us flexibility to choose up to 90%. We cannot pay any more than 90%. Right now, we're paying 95%. What we have right now, we should not be, we should not be contributing at all. The law that we, that, because we don't have an adopted that subsection, we shouldn't be paying anything towards the retirees supplemental insurance. So I guess at this point, I need to go back and we need to draft a bylaw to go with the town meaning to adopt one of those sections. And then at that point, a vote will be taken for the town to determine how much they pay towards the supplemental insurance. I was thinking something possibly like a 75% towards the supplemental as opposed to 95%.
So I would think that based on what you're saying, going with the E one would make the most sense, right? Because then it would allow us some flexibility.
Flexibility for you.
And as well as, it's kind of tough to tell someone who's on fixed income, you know, most people who are retired now on fixed income, that they're gonna go from 95%, whether it be illegal or not, to 50%, it's a tough ask.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
It actually should be 0% right now. We shouldn't be contributing at all based on what's in, in the Mass General Law, what we have, because we haven't adopted one of these. So that's what I think at this point, we need to go back, adopt one of these, probably that E, and then have this decision. And it just requires, unlike some of the other health insurance stuff that we do, this just requires a selectmen's vote. Once this Mass General Law gets passed, this will just require a selectmen's vote. So yeah, and I'm not sure, I can kind of take a look at if there's a way, because I, I hear you, I mean, we wanna lessen the burden to the, to the retiree, but also the health insurance costs are just astronomical. We have to balance that somewhere. I don't know if there's a way, I don't think there is because it's against the statute currently to say, okay, we're gonna grandfather in. I know we can't grandfather in at the rate that we're at because it should never have been there. I don't know how it came about, it just is.
At this rate, in theory, it could continue, just, it's gonna keep going up at the rate of health insurance going up, right?
Yeah, which is, it might be 10% this year. So the supplemental plans run around.
You're talking $33,000.
Yeah.
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 So I just, I'll, I'll work on that article for the next town meeting. And then, like I said, I was thinking, I can see if there's a way to grandfather in, maybe up to 90% of who's on it and then new retirees that are switching over, I don't know, I can play around with some of those ideas.
Like I think we do need, obviously, if we're currently like outside, you know, it's currently illegal what we're doing, right? I think it makes sense for, go forward with bylaw change. I think we also need to just, I think the right thing to do is to communicate to, if we can get a list of those retirees, you know, so they're not shocked by this, you know, change, but.
Whatever I was.
Responsible thing to do, I think, is to address this.
Right, I think that you, so this, our, our insurance runs, for the retirees, it runs January to December, right? We already approved their rate for this year. I think it's something that you would not do until next January, right? So we have town meeting, you make the vote, we send out letters saying, as of January 1, our percentage of contribution is going to drop from 95 to 75, or whatever the board votes.
Yeah.
So they would have a full about six months.
And phase it in, like, we're not gonna go, we're not gonna go right to zero, is that what you're saying, right?
Right, yeah, I don't know that you, like, you cannot go to zero, you could go to 50, you could go, you could go, you could go to 75. You can do anything under, I think, between 0 and 90.
No, Deb, how many people are we talking about? How many people?
Eighty-six.
So 86 individuals?
I got, no, I got 99, 102.
So like per person.
We're all doing the same thing.
Yeah. So try to like, piggyback off Jared and Trevor, you know.
294 a month, sorry.
294 a month, right, and it's, we have to balance all that out for not following the law. That's on us, we have to make sure that we are following the law, that's one of the main reasons why we're all up here, right? So, but to find that balance, that's gonna be.
And I don't know how long we haven't been following the law, that's why I say, I mean, at this point, we'll just leave it as is and we're gonna try to rectify it.
Yeah, I'm not trying to go backwards in time, right? Like if there's no back pay, let's just fix it moving forward. And then, so 102 people, you know, dedicated employees and we thank them for retiring and being with the town, so. But at the same time, we have to make sure we're.
Again, this is when they turn 65, I mean, we have more retirees, but this, because the town picks, you know, if you retire at 62 here, or 55, if you're a public safety, you know, personnel, the town pays, pays, get your full health insurance until you're 65. At that point, the state says you have to go on Medicare. All the federal government, one of them dictates it, so you have to, and this is a supplemental program to that.
We do 75, 25 right now with the insurance, correct?
That is what we do currently. There are some grandfathered in higher than that for retirees though, in terms of their full insurance. There are some 9010s, there are some maybe even 8020s, but they would have been grandfathered in from the time that they worked here. So I think prior to 2013, it was a different, different contribution ratio. It was changed back in 2013, I think it's 13, might be 2010. When the, when the recession hit and things got really tight, they changed the ratio.
Gotcha.
So have I answered the question basically? So you'll be seeing this again.
So we don't need to vote on anything right now?
Yeah, because I need a bylaw first.
Do you have, do you have anything on this one? No. You know, it's finance related, if maybe you'd have a, you know? All right, cool. All right, so we ready to move on, folks?
Yeah.
All right, number six, this is discussion of vote whether approve Bristol County mosquito to use air sprays over Free Town for annual aerial application scheduled for April, weather permitting. I feel like this is something we do every year.
I think it is.
Funny enough, when I read this, I saw the, the attachment first. And the first thing I see is program tracking reporting system, like, what are we doing here in Free Town? Then you read the agenda, it's all mosquitoes, so. You know, I'm sure the folks out in town listen to this, right, afterwards? Is it safe to be around the spray, do I have to be indoors? I'm assuming we're gonna put information out to the residents during all this.
Yeah, they'll be definitely communicated, has been the past at least, and kind of something we have to do to mitigate the. Bless Nile and everything else.
Absolutely.
All right, so without, I'll entertain a motion to approve Bristol County mosquito to use air sprays over Free Town for the annual aeration, aerial application scheduled for April.
A motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have the agenda item seven, this is vote whether approve the annual town report for fiscal year 2023? Okay.
Did you give it to them? I did email it over the weekend, but.
Yeah, yep. It's amazing when you, when you read through, I'm always astounded how much stuff's in there, right? The stuff that, we do so many decisions throughout the year, then you read it and like, as plain as that, you did a great job, by the way. And sorry I haven't responded to your email, but it is well written. And the amount of things that you've added on there is, um.
There's so much more, right? But I just try to put the big ticket items and say like, okay, this is what happened. And I try to, you know, look at the overall big picture of where we're going and what was done. But yeah, it's difficult to do because it's actually a report that runs from July 1 22 to June 30 of 23. Well, you've, like, I'm already well beyond that.
World's, yeah.
I have to go through our agendas and I. I have to go through our agendas and I go through the town meetings, and I'm like, you know, we've already like, you know, it talks about starting projects, that we're already finished now.
Yeah.
But I'm like, trying to keep it in the same token, um, what's in there and uh, but we have done a lot. We are moving, and you'll see that when we get to the projects of tonight, and these aren't all of them, but where we're at and what we're doing.
Awesome.
Yeah, I I mean, I liked it. I, you know, the kind of mimic what Carlos said, you did a great job with it, and it is, it's a, it's overwhelming when you look at it on paper sometimes, um, how much is actually getting done and how much other facets of the government are helping us out, right, through these grants and everything. I think you did a good job of calling it out for what it is, because we have gotten a lot of help from uh different senators and stuff, right, so.
Yeah, we have. We've done well last few years.
Yeah. Well, thank you.
Yeah, I'll echo that. Thank you. That's great work. All right, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the annual town report for fiscal year twenty twenty-three.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, gen item eight, discussion of vote whether approve the placement of a weather station at the summit of the landfill on Howland Road by the DCR State Fire Control Warden's request. Sounds good to me. Any questions or concerns on this?
No, um, fire chief, you know, said that it wouldn't cost nothing to us. It won't hurt us. It's, you know, at the transfer station, there's nothing to worry about, so, you know.
Maybe we'll get better local weather.
Fair enough.
Maybe it'll be an app we can tap into, if you have a know.
So yeah, I honestly don't have any issues with that, so yeah.
All right, cool. Um, all right, sounds good. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve placement of a weather station at the summit of the landfill on Howland Road by the DCR State Fire Control Warden's request.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, uh, that now, gen item nine, discussion of vote whether approve the creation of two new Freetown MA dot gov email addresses um for fire department grants and in-house IT. I have no issues with this.
Yeah.
I'm happy we're doing this now, which is, I think, is a great new approach, you know?
I I think they're hitting up, thinking the same thing we are, right? So getting the grants easy part, maintaining is the hard part, right? And that's um when I, when I read that, I go, the grand writer needs a night, needs that, because it's probably a lot of stuff they have to keep track of.
Yeah.
So, um, especially with, especially with the radio pro- uh pro- uh program, so.
Yeah.
Absolutely. It's a no-brainer.
Awesome. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the creation of two new Freetown MA dot gov email addresses for the fire department grants and in-house IT.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, and then uh, gen item ten, is discussion on commu- community electrical aggregation program?
I thought I would put this on the agenda because of all of the um comments regarding the new electrical rates um from, you know, everybody's electric bill going up. And I just wanted to kind of give a brief overview of how we got where we're at with Constellation. So there there's a a company, I think it's called Good Energy, and they actually work with us and twenty-five other towns. So this is not just Freetown. There's twenty-five other towns that are in this aggregate. And we tried to use our uh size to get a cheaper rate, to then offer that cheaper rate to the townspeople. This has been going on for a few years. In this last year, uh, we work with the Good Energy. They put, they actually put the services out to bid to get the cheapest rate they can get for the twenty-five um communities that are involved. We originally got two bids for electricity. However, before we could vote on one of them, one of them backed out. So at the end of the day, Constellation was the only one that offered us any aggregate number. And it's because, I believe it's the uncertainty of the cost of gas, uh liquid propane, uh liquid gas, natural gas, that drives the cost of electricity. And if you notice, we were much lower, the Constellation rate that we had aggregate prior to the new change was much lower than EverSource was. And I think Constellation felt that, you know, they had signed, I believe it was a few-year contract, and they were stuck in there. They had to offer the electricity at that lower rate. So this was, you know, put out to bid. That was the lowest bidder. The aggregate, twenty-five communities all had to agree, we did, we agreed to that rate. And that's the rate. It is still lower than EverSource at this current time. It's the guaranteed rate until, I think, November of twenty-five. However, there are other, so you know, suppliers of um electricity that you can buy your electricity from. You still have to pay the delivery to EverSource. Um, so the, but, you know, the town doesn't really drive the utility in what they charge. And I think people believe that somehow we do. No, we just agreed to be in this aggregate to use the buying power to get a cheaper rate to offer that to the townspeople. But we don't drive EverSource, their utility. They can charge what they want, and there's not really much we can do for it. Uh, there was letters that were sent out in November, letting everybody know that this was coming, that the change was made. There is information on our webpage that does give you um where you can find the other choices um online. Um, and actually, they look pretty good. I might be, I might.
Yeah, I saw some of it.
Yeah, I might be changing um myself, because there are some that seem to be cheaper, but just always beware, there are sometimes fees when you change.
Yeah.
Um, so you wanna make sure that if you're going to change, that they're not gonna whack you with a a fee to change and change back. You can always go back to EverSource. I believe that's free of charge, but some of these other ones um may charge you a fee if you wanna get out of them once you're in them. And I don't know how quickly. I used to be with one prior to this aggregation uh that we have had on my, I had my own service and um they went up, like, they changed every month. They were really low, and then they were really high, and that was a little bit nerve-wracking for me, so I got out of that one. So I just want everybody to do their homework uh to make sure they're not gonna get hit with the fees of joining or um getting out if that happens. But this really has nothing to do with the town, other than we belong to the aggregation to try to get a better rate for the townspeople. So I just thought it was good to explain the process.
That's, that's important.
And I think to to mimic what you just said is for people to be very careful and cautious of not just looking at the number we have here, but really looking at what they're signing themselves up for. Distance of the contract, what can happen after, or what can even happen during, right? Your point is this could be something that they start with a low rate, and then it goes to a variable rate, and then they're paying a lot more.
Yeah.
I will say that at least although our rate isn't as good as it once was, um, you know what you're getting, and you know what you're gonna get every month. So, um, and the town's not gonna make anything off of this. That's the other thing, is I don't want people to think like we're trying to push something on them because we're gonna make something on it. This has nothing to do with it. It's literally us trying to help a service in town, so.
Right.
Yeah, so twenty-five communities, supply and demand, we're we're taking the power of many to get the lowest rate. Now, did I hear you say that this rate of fifteen cents is locked in till November twenty-five?
Yes.
Which is kind of leads my second question is, if you look at a lot of these rates that are cheaper today, eleven cents, twelve cents, you're only good through nine months.
Yes.
Cancellation fee, automatic renewal fee. So just forget, December, we're paying ten cents. A month later, we're paying fifteen cents, right? What does that tell us? Electricity's always going up. So for locked in till November of next year, some of these may not be, might be worthwhile today, but what's it gonna be in nine months? What's it gonna be? So when you change your idea, change your mind and go cheaper, you do you, you take care of your family and your household, it's great, but make sure, please, look at the fine print. Print that out, say, I think it's, I think some people are telling me as well, or reading it, it's about a one-to-two-month timeframe before you actually switch. And like Debbie said, you're still gonna pay the delivery charge, so look at your delivery charge today, right? Look at your bill. Whatever the delivery charge is, it's probably gonna still gonna be the same, because it's getting paid to EverSource. That hasn't changed, no matter who you choose. So make sure you're doing the math each way and every way possible to make your decision, and good luck. Uh, we wish you the best. We really do want your bills to be the lowest as possible.
All right, perfect, thank you. So with that, I'll kick it over to Selectmen Loops for Personnel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item Personnel Board, item agenda eleven, discussion and vote whether appoint Kylie Battaglio as Community Program Director effective uh February twelfth, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. So this is the community program um to help with uh seniors, uh parks and recreation, all around general uh events around town to make sure that not just our seniors, but our our kids, of friends and family have something to do, and this person's, you know, has got to gel them all together and make things happen. So I'm very excited for uh Kylie to come on board, from my understanding, she's motivated. And that's what we need in town, and let's get her on board.
Sounds great. Um, any discussion concerns?
I have a question. Um.
Please just say your name for the, for the record.
Yeah, you had it on. Yeah, there you go.
Green's on.
Okay. Hi, my name's Sheila Churchill. Um, I just had a question on the appointed position, because I see Kylie was appointed and.
Well, she was hired.
Oh, she was hired.
Yes, this is a hired position, interviewed, throughout the ap- application process, interviewed, and then selected out of a group of applicants.
Okay.
So a little bit different.
I thought it said appointed on the agenda.
Oh, we start to appoint them to their position.
Okay.
So, so a little different from elected and and everything else. This one, it's she, this is just a formality at the end of the day to get her on board and get her started for next week.
Okay, and do you guys have a policy on how appointed positions work?
So all policies are uh, should be on our our town website under the meeting law, open meeting laws for one, right, which is the appointment of elected officials. And then the personal laws, bylaws, we follow what the state does. So we should have it on our website. Um, where it is on the website, I'm not too sure, but I'm pretty sure we can find it and send it over if you need it.
Yeah, if you could. Do you mind just emailing it to me?
Sure. So um, you gotta go through that that young lady all the way at the end to make sure that we we get the information you need, all right?
Thank you.
No problem. Yeah. Yeah, we should have it online. But if not, we'll make sure we update it. Any other concerns, questions, um?
There you go.
Yeah, just welcome her aboard. I entertain the motion to appoint Kylie Battaglio as Community Program Director effective two twelve, twenty twenty-four through six thirty, twenty twenty-four.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, back to our town administrator.
Okay.
I made sure one for you.
I thought that this was um gonna be a sort of a light meeting, and I thought I would get the board up to date on all a lot of the projects that we're working on, just so if there's any questions of where we're at. There's a lot going on. Um, and Luanne was kind enough to kind of help me with some, some pictures for the, for the viewers at home possibly, so they can kind of have some hands-on stuff to look at. So the first project is our sewer line extension project, which extends the sewer line, which is um currently uh uh comes in through Fall River, uh the Asonet Line uh down Main Street to Stop and Shop. This project is for the engineering that would bring that sewer line from Stop and Shop all the way down to the four corners where the town hall is. Um, we had had a, the town had done a feasibility study back in two thousand and nineteen, point, you know, working on this. We picked up, we are doing the engineering now. We got a grant in the amount of seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for this project. We matched it with Opera Funds of two hundred thousand for a total project cost of nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Right now, we are okay on course, but we are over approximately thirty thousand dollars, because there was a couple of surveying issues. There was an old Main Street road that I guess that runs where the telephone poles are and the utilities are, but we don't use it anymore where Innovation Way is. Um, it just, you'll see it if you go there now. Yeah, and so they surveyed Innovation Way, and then they couldn't find like the the main there, and then we had, so they had to add some surveying anyway. So we were approximately thirty thousand dollars over on budget for the additional surveys and police details that we need. I'll be looking to probably fund that with Opera, remaining Opera County Opera Funds, so I'll be asking for that at the next meeting. Um, this, this project is a, is about a two-year project. We started it late last year. It'll, it, I'm estimating that the engineering and permitting will be done December of twenty twenty-five. We are on schedule. Once the project, the engineering piece of this is done, I um expect to be looking for grants to actually start construction on this. So we, you know, I I don't, I'm I'm hopeful that we can get grants to do this in phases, probably two to three phases, because this is probably a fifteen million dollar construction cost. Um, there was something else.
Fifteen million, is that where, is that where estimating it?
I'm gonna estimate it, because originally it was like twenty million, but I've, I have not, it's not as extensive as it was originally um in terms of where it was, because you, the original plan, the feasibility study came down to the four corners and then went Water Street, Pleasant Street, and and came back down North Main to the four corners, made like a loop there. I cut that loop off mainly because this, this is for economic growth, and I didn't see the economic growth in that area as I do down the Main Street area. We can always add that piece on, but you see how expensive it is. So I thought it was mainly to concentrate on um Ridge Hill Road, the industrial park. Uh, we have some businesses up there that really need um sewer to expand. And of course, our MBTA area of town that's looking at new zoning that will need this sewer line to increase housing um capacity based on the governor's law that we have to have all these new units.
Yep.
So those are the um couple of things that, you know, I wanted to mention on that.
And this is kind of a silly question, but where it will kind of cap off at the end, right? It would, it'll still be very easy for them to put that loop in. Here, here's my reason for saying that is the one upside of having that loop before, I agree, at this point, it doesn't make sense to do it at the cost of, you know, twenty-five percent of the project. We've dealt with a bunch of this stuff with septic systems.
Yeah.
On the water.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So having that would help those residents so that they can tie into this rather than put an extremely expensive septic system in their house that needs to be monitored.
Right. And at some point, we know the nitrogens are lo- are going into the river, right? Um, both down the lane and Water Street. So we've actually talked about this. I'm actually thinking of, you know, looking for a grant to pay for those little fingers there, because I think that that definitely will be a benefit to the town. Um, the capacity of this line has been designed to pick up uh all the things that we could possibly project that might come into it, like we, Amerikan is expanding. We actually, Amerikan was kind enough to have their engineer project what they are gonna need for a flow, so that we could calculate that into the flow and make sure our pipes are the right size. We know that there was a pr- an approved project on one twenty-five South Main Street for seventy-two housing units. We made sure that the flow was included in this. We also included every single house along the way. So we've spent a lot of time, and I say we, because Victoria from the planning department has been vital and also this project with me, um and I, and I can't, I can't not uh say thank you to Jim Resendis, who's also volunteered his time to help with this, because he's very knowledgeable. So we um, we, we have tried to include every possible scenario, even to the point where I've thought of, I think I've even included Crystal Springs School in it, because that's a big use of sewer. They have multiple septic systems up there that don't last very long because of the laundry and the stuff that they use. So we have included as much of that future use as possible so that we size this appropriately.
Yeah, cause that's downhill too, right? It's going downhill flow, might actually help the, yeah.
Yeah.
I guess that would, that was my, my question too, is because, and then I'm glad that you're telling us this, because the last thing you wanna do is, it's kind of, we've talked about it with what happened with the police station, right? They built it, and in day one, they were at full capacity.
Yeah.
So I wonder if we're gonna spend fifteen million dollars or whatever the case may be, that it's extremely oversized for that point, because it's going to be needed more and more, and as people have the ability to pull from it, they will.
Yeah.
Right. And I, I will tell you, that's been a a back and the forth with um the engineers, because there's an eight-inch line existing and part of the roadway, and they think that's too big, and and they want to um, they wanna go six inches, and I'm like, they wanna sleeve it for six inches, which is gonna cause some grief. Um, but I'm like, I don't wanna do that. I'd rather so what happens is now we have to build a bigger pump station to make sure we push the flow through, so it doesn't get stuck in the pipe and dry up and then cause clogs. So I said, I'd rather you oversize the pump station and push it through than make this pipe smaller, and then we don't have the room for expansion. So we're actually having these conversations um to, I, exactly what you're saying, not run into problems once we do have things up and running um and people wanna add on. So I think we'll be able to add that loop down the line uh from that. Speaking of that, one of the other things that goes into this is the whole dam conversation.
Mm-hmm.
So I got the price from the engineers. To go onto Route twenty-four with new construction is gonna cost about uh one point two million dollars. That's permits, that's construction, that's everything. To use the existing line and sleeve it and check for, to make sure that it's okay, is gonna cost about six hundred thousand dollars. So there's a, there's about a savings of six hundred thousand dollars. Uh, but with that, we take on the responsibility of a dam, and we don't really know. The other problem is if we get into it and we're sleeving it and we have a problem, and then we have to cut open the road, we're dead in the water, because to get the permits from Mass COT to go underneath the Route twenty-four takes six, nine months. So we'd have to stop while we waited for those permits. So we'd have to stop while we waited for those permits. So I I'm gonna continue to tell you that I don't think that's the way to go, but it's not on for a vote tonight. But I just get the information and pull it together.
And getting the being responsible for the dam is also a concern.
A big concern and a more than a six hundred thousand dollar concern because it's the unknown.
Yeah.
So we'll bring that up for an official vote.
Yeah, because we have to find out what you just have liability insurance and what and what good does that dam do for us? It's literally a liability except for having this pipe.
And inspected all the time.
Right. And the difference is six hundred thousand, but that's six hundred thousand can cause us headaches down the road, right? Which more than likely will with all the floodings we see and everything else.
And it's over a hundred years old, the pipe.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
Probably means it's better built than anything we're gonna see today, but.
Right. It probably is.
We don't know, right? So and if there's a crack in it, we have to pressure test it and if there's a crack, then again, like I said, now we're excavating it up. And if we don't have the permits to do that, it's gonna slow us down. So I I can't, I will tell you that my my thought process is to stay away from that, but.
Yeah. And I know, you know, for those out there listening and going, these guys are talking about spending fifteen million dollars. Well, here's the background, right? Like Deb said right at the beginning, economic growth. Only way this town will continue moving forward into twenty twenty four and beyond and maintain our little small town charm is getting more businesses out here. Right now they're they have the bill for those those the areas we have. Not to mention waters drying up, right? Wells are drying, especially the old artigian ones. Having water is gonna come in handy down the road. Not to mention the septic nitrogen. So it's a win win for the town. Yeah, it costs money, but.
Well, I'm gonna pursue grants for all of it and I do think that I can, I can fund it in phases with grants. So I don't want anybody to panic. We know that we can't raise taxes. And so I'll continue to look for the grants right now. I've got to finish this piece of it. I may, after our discussion tonight, though, look, I may talk about getting a separate grant to do the engineering for those loops and those two legs. So that piece of it will be done under a different grant possibly. So I I'll work on that. There's a grant right now that's open that I can put that through. So that's in this picture here, just for people at home, is just showing you the sewer line location. So you have an idea of what's going on. All right, I think that's it. Any other questions on the sewer line?
Nope. No, well thought of. Thank you for the information. That's glad it's working out.
Council on Aging, Temporary Pods. This one's very exciting because we're finally moving forward. And this is just sort of a rough draft of the front elevation of the pod. We've spent a little time with procurement. We've worked with the engineers out there. We're actually meeting with the maker Will Scott tomorrow on the pods. I have a quote of two hundred and sixty two thousand dollars to order it. I just want to ask some final questions before we sign the quote to get the ball rolling. We've met out on site, Carl, myself, Rebecca, some of the board members, you know, from the COA. So I know it doesn't look fancy, but it will be wide open on the inside. Great for them to do some activities in. The one thing that we did have to do in the, this was gonna butt up to the side, the right hand side of the COA. We had to pull it forward because we couldn't fit it in with the way we wanted to match that door. So now we're gonna have to build sort of a little vestibule, like an entryway from the existing building into the end of this. The cost of that I don't know because I haven't designed it yet. So the original budget for this project was three hundred thousand dollars. This piece of it may cost two hundred and sixty two thousand, although Kyle and I have some questions on the quote. It may come down a little bit. So I now have to get a design of the vestibule and the cost to build it. My guess is we will be over budget, but not by a lot. But I do believe that the building of that vestibule will push us over budget.
But is it gonna come off the front? Sorry. Is it gonna be further forward now?
So the sort of the corners are gonna touch. It's it's gonna be the the back edge of it is going to be parallel with the front of the building. And that little corner with a side door is will be an entryway that we build. And some storage, which they need some additional storage. So it's sort of a win win. This, just keep in mind, is a temporary, sort of an office trailer. It will sit on the trailer. It will stay on the steel frame. So we met with the engineers out there. We're gonna drop the elevation of the parking lot and dig it down. So when they set it down, it will be level with the existing building. It will be, which actually works out well because the parking lot drops down towards the road. And when we're able to drop this down, it almost keeps it level on the end towards the towards the street. And they pull the, they disconnect the tongue, right? So they, you won't have that trailer hitch piece. They they can take that off. So it'll just be the square box and they'll put vinyl siding all around the bottom of it. So it will sort of look good. It's not gonna be the most beautiful thing, but I think it's gonna.
Space.
It's going to give them space and I think it's gonna be kind of exciting when we get it all done. We will need to do some redesigning of the parking lot. There's an engineer, GPI is working on that. But I think Chuck and his crew will do a lot of that work as he always does. So I don't have a cost of what it's gonna actually cost to redo the parking lot. Because I I'm confident that Chuck can do a good portion of it.
Perfect. And what's our, what's our like realistic timeline?
I don't know. I'm thinking it's the pod itself will take about four months to get in. I think Chuck can do a lot of the site work on the site. So it's gonna be building that vestibule now, how long that takes me to do it. It won't preclude them from using it. It just won't be attached to the building in the beginning. Because all basically it's gonna be set. They come in, they set it, they bolt it down, they vinyl side it. And then we just have to get the electrician to hook up the power to it. There's no, there's no bathroom in it. There's no plumbing in it, right? And so once the power is hooked to it, it's ready to go. It has the the heaters that go on the wall.
Mini splits.
Yeah, mini splits, right? So they're all electric. So I'm 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 gonna say realistically, July, it'll be here and functioning on some level. It probably won't be completely done until the fall. The COA would like to have like a patio outside the door, make a courtyard. I'm gonna try to work with Bristol Aggie to try to get some of that work done at cost, materials, but I'm not there yet, you know? So again, we will be over budget. We'll have to go to town meeting and reallocate some of their existing budget for this project. But to actually order the pods, we have the money, we have the funding, so we can get that rolling.
Perfect.
Yeah, I'm excited for it. This is gonna be a great little addition. Like you said, it's not gonna be the prettiest thing, but it's gonna be functional and temporary solution for now.
And it can be reused down the road. So that's the other thing we're gonna talk about, right? And I know we've talked about it a million times, but it can be moved once we're done, right? Tires can be pulled back underneath it and it can be moved to a different location. And.
Yeah, that hitch just gets put back on and you just pull it where we need to go. So.
Love it, love it, love it.
Public safety communication upgrades. This is the tower. This is the projects with the with the tower project that I've been working on for two years, I think. This has been a very difficult project. Every time I get through one hurdle, there's another one. And there was just another one today. I am on the last leg of this with signing purchase orders for the remaining equipment that needs to be ordered to the tune of about five or six hundred thousand dollars. At that point, all the equipment will be ordered and everything ready to be hung up. I don't know why we can continue to have issues. Original equipment that was specked was used in another town. It failed in that town. So we had to go back to the drawing board and get new equipment. I just get the PO now for four hundred thousand dollars. And they included fifty six thousand dollars for a warranty. Fifty six thousand dollars for a warranty? I said, I don't understand this. I'm not paying for this. Like, you're giving us brand new equipment. You have no warranty? Well, there's a two year warranty. So why do I need to pay fifty six thousand dollars for another, for a third year of warranty? And then what's the cost every year after that? So I told them, take the warranty off. That's a conversation for another day. I need the equipment. I need to get it ordered because it's a four month, fourteen week lead time. And I will continue to work with the chiefs and Chick Langounas, who we're working with to try to figure out what's going on with this fifty six thousand dollars of warranty. That's just one of them. The other one was seven, was twenty one thousand dollars. So it like I said, every time you turn around, you think you're ready to go, we have a meeting and they're just gonna give you a PO. But then when you look at the purchase order, the 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 quote, it comes with stuff that doesn't belong on there or that I have to further vet. So I'm hopeful, I've told them the timeline is July, July one and hopeful that these radials will be working for the July fourth parade. They're a little skeptical, but I'm gonna push them.
Keep pushing them and stay on top of the warranty.
The good news is I think we're on, I mean, we finally, we're, you know, the budget is the budget and we're not going over this budget. So we're funded to finish this with with the opera money that we have.
Perfect.
Municipal, any questions on that one?
Oh, just one, you know, we, I'm glad the project's going on and this is fantastic. They they've, this is overdue. Any chance, I know you're busy. I know you're busy. We love you for it, right? We love that you're busy. Has any like Verizon Comcast come back saying, hey, we like to lease the towers? Is that conversation?
So the only tower that they could lease is the tower that we own. I haven't put out an offer for that, no. I I know that's there, but I just haven't had the time.
Yeah, I know. I know you're busy. I know we've talked about it. It's just.
Maybe I can get someone to work on that for me. The municipal fiber project, this is a project that we get a grant to fund a portion of it. We're using Opera funds to force to fund the residual portion of it. I just sort of kicked off this last week with a meeting of everybody that's involved. It went very well, just trying to go. So our telephone poles are owned by Verizon and EverSource jointly. So I'm trying to work with them to get them to sign off on us attaching to the poles. And I need to apply to Opera to actually get the funding from them. I don't anticipate any issues. Other than that, I have to just make sure that I can use the the contract is one of the companies that I've been working with. I have to make sure they're on the, they're on the state bid list, but I have to make sure I can use that because it's federal Opera money that I can use them. If I can, they've pretty much designed this, which will show you the fiber will go to connect all our town buildings. So.
It's a red line, right?
Yeah, it will connect everything. So what that means, we're paying for nineteen internet subscriptions currently. It will mean that we will no longer have to pay for all of those. We will have one internet and it will fire up every town building. Plus, all of us will be connected. The only thing that will be separated will be the police station. And because of, you know, they're, they need their own secure network, they're not gonna be tied directly into everybody else's portal. And one other one possibly, but this will also connect fiber to our towers. One in Berkeley, one, the one in East Freetown, back to the police station, which will mean if the microwave signals go down, they have fiber signals to back up. It will also connect directly to the Freetown Elementary School. So our police station will be directly connected to the Freetown Elementary School. And it also connects to Lakeville, the campus in Lakeville. So then the two, the schools, right now they're not connected. So the, you know, the high schools and the middle schools will all be connected to the elementary school as well. So this is sort of a really all encompassing project, which is why it's expensive because we're covering a lot of ground. And I'm bringing in, I have to bring in TMLP to do the piece in Berkeley because they own the lines and everything there. And then I have to bring in contract to do the rest for our town. So the project cost is about six hundred thousand dollars. We have six hundred and fifty five thousand dollars in funding. But there will be police details and whatnot that I have to pay for that will come in addition to the actual physical labor of running the fiber. We're paying about three thousand dollars a month for internet and services now. So long term, this project will actually be a good thing for the town.
Yeah, and I think also there's another opportunity here from what comes to economic development, right? We're laying the groundwork now to have fiber. Like I know that's an important thing that a lot of companies look for as a prerequisite for a location because they need it. So like, I know this is just for the municipal stuff, but right, it doesn't, and I'm remembering our conversations on this prior. It does like the capacity will be there.
The capacity is there to add on to it.
Too, yeah. So I think that's really exciting.
Did have to, I think we have a hundred and a hundred and forty four strands, but there was one run up Slabber's Road, the long run. I had to reduce it to seventy two strands because the budget was over and I just, I couldn't allocate more money to this project than what we have already allocated. But I asked them, they they don't, like literally, we're gonna use one strand because it's seventy two. So they all felt that it was comparable that what I had there. And also, so when we did the the tower project, I made sure all of that equipment can take the fiber as well. So it it will make things much faster, much more secure for us.
Incredibly fast.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I said, like.
A game changer.
Yeah. So I'm excited about it. It's it's a difficult project because it's so foreign to me to understand what they're saying to me. But I pulled in our IT guy, Chris was kind enough to sit in on the meeting, the chiefs, both chiefs, because it will. One of the things we're having a problem with is the download speed from dispatch to the fire station. So this will fix that problem wholeheartedly. And I pulled in both chiefs and of course Victoria from planning, myself and contracts and Ken Bell from TMLP. So I think we're finally on a point where we're ready to move forward on this project and I'm excited about it. It will take about four months to put all the fiber up.
Is it hard to tie off of, right? If we had to extend it from one place to another.
It doesn't seem like it, what they tell me.
And I guess I'm always saying that, and let's face it, we always talk about if we want to build a new town hall, we would want it at a central location. But say you had to go with this wire in an opposite direction from where we currently are, are we able to tie off of it?
Yeah, I mean, the good news is anything we do, like a new library or whatever, will be up here. And this is gonna have fiber because we're bringing it in, so.
I'm excited. This is an exciting project. I don't know if people realize that. This is, it means you can actually get different companies in here, like like Trevor's saying. Like it, like I think of Verizon files right away, right?
Yeah.
They they use fiber. And I remember having files and it was much faster than, and I'll say Comcast is slow or anything like that. That's not what I'm trying to say. But it gives you more options at the end of the day and it might fix some death spots around town that with the towers.
Right. We're really moving forward with some of our public safety stuff for sure. Any other questions on that one?
Exciting.
Can't wait.
Fire station addition renovation. I don't know. I mean, we put a plan up here and just it hasn't changed from the last time I did. We've seen it. We're still moving forward now. We're in the construction phase, construction design. Not the construction phase, but the design documents of how you're gonna construct it. They're, you know, they're hammering out the details. I've kind of stayed out of the project because my piece of this is budget related. I'm waiting for the final sort of where they've worked out all the the little back and forth in terms of what they want. And then they're gonna give me an updated budget. As you know, I think I came here before we were over budget. We had budgeted three million dollars. They were over budget by about a million dollars. I expect them to be over budget by a million, maybe one point five million. As we sort of hammer out all of the design features of this, this building. But I I don't know because we've been cutting and cutting things out to get it to where it needs to be. So super excited about this. I'm expecting to hopefully break ground sometime in early, you know, June, July, I'm hoping. I don't know if I'm over optimistic, but they tell me they're still on track, so I don't know.
It's a, you know, it's a good group of people working on it.
Oh, my God, it's amazing.
Call that out. You know, the architects, the the fire department, everyone, as you know, right? We they they all teamed together and worked together. Someone who sat through it with you and you said, you know, you mimic the same thing, right? Like it was just everyone working together and I think it's what's helping move the project along.
The project's moving at epic speed. I'm not gonna lie to you. I mean, they meet weekly. I just don't, I don't, I don't need to be involved in when they're getting into details about whether they have a diesel pump or an electric pump. That's for the chiefs and and the architects and the OPM to 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 really hammer out the the pros and the cons of those details. I think, but that being said, it's a five thousand square foot addition. It's a lot of money. And they don't, I want them to take the time to really do the design so that we're not doing change orders in the middle of the project. So they're doing that. So if we run over time wise, I'm okay with that because they're really hammering the details out, which is what you want. You know, from my construction background and building background, if you've got a great set of plans, you're golden. If you've got plans that you now get halfway through that don't work, it causes a lot of change orders and a lot of expense. So this is, this one excites me the most. I can't wait to see this start to really come to fruition. Super excited for the fire department too because they really need this.
If you ever been in that room and they're all in there trying to sit around and eat and cook and then kind of like do work, it's tight. So I'm gonna piggyback off of Jared. What Jared said, a lot of great people working on this and there's a lot of needs in here. Very little wants, right? All it meets their needs, which is amazing. So congrats to you guys for moving this along and you're right, this is moving pretty quickly.
And one of the things I know I don't want to continue. And one of the things I know, I don't want to continue to drag this on forever, but I will say is, you know, in our conversations, one of the things that was brought up and I was worried about was it not being a Band-Aid. But the chief brought up a great point that we currently have three stations. And as we outgrow this state, we won't outgrow this station because really the need would then be to have more done on that side of town and more done on that side of town. So it won't be a situation where we outgrow this location. So it's something that I want to bring up because, you know, he, in, in our conversations, he brought up to me, I'm like, I guess I never really thought of it that way. Where I'm so used to, you know, the police having a central location, us saying, well, let's move town home. It's a little bit different with them, so.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
It's a good. South Main Street Bridge. We've talked about this before, how the bridge on South Main Street is literally sort of cracked in half. It was repaired in two thousand and nineteen. I think it cost the town about eight hundred thousand dollars. You saw the guy on the houseboat under the bridge actually doing some pointing there. They did a lot of work. However, there's still a crack down the middle of the bridge. And what the engineers have told me is that if it starts to move, the bridge is shut down that day. The minute it moves, all bets are off. So it's holding its own right now, but I, being the planner in nature that I am, have been consistently, and, and this is the one that, you know, Chuck says this is the last, last bridge in town that really needs to be addressed. All the other ones have been addressed and repaired and whatnot. So Chuck used Chapter Ninety money, agreed to use Chapter Ninety money to have the bridge study done, which gives us options of what we do. We just got this, I, I was just kind of quickly reading it tonight. Right now, the bridge is okay. It's, it's working. We just don't know how long that repair will last for. But it takes a long time to plan to, to, to repair a bridge and to close that road down, right? So I'm just sort of trying to lay the groundwork for what will take place in three or four or five years from now. Alcon Gloss has been out there. He's put some earmark money away or some, some stuff that hasn't come, they haven't finalized it yet. So I don't know whether we'll get that money. But there's a lot to look at when we're looking at this bridge. There's three different options to require replacing the bridge, which we also know this is a historical bridge. So that's, that's a big issue. The third one is sort of overlaying it like we did our, most of the other bridges, which is a steel plate that overlays it, that then takes the weight off of the existing bridge and carries it outward. Much cheaper, much quicker, because I think you want to think about how long that road's gonna be closed down. If you look at the last page of that report, it sort of summarizes the time. So overlaying that would be, you know, a twelve month shutdown of the road. Replacing the bridge is anywhere from twenty-four to thirty-six to forty-eight months of closure. So at quick glance, just looking at that, I would say that last option of overlaying the bridge with a steel sort of bridge, like we've done some of the others in town, is probably the best way to go. But this really lays out pros and cons, so I'm gonna just leave it at that, let you guys spend some time with it because we just got it. Maybe we even post it up on the webpage for anybody who wants to look at it. It hasn't gone to planning yet. They haven't seen it. Again, I don't want anybody to be alarmed. This is nothing that's happening anytime soon. Because after I always talk about the bridge, everybody calls me and says, when are you closing the bridge? I'm not closing the bridge. We're not there yet. There's many, many decisions that need to be made. The, the last option is about a, a million dollar option. All the other ones are two, three million dollars. So obviously funding will be an issue. And there will be so much planning that has to go into that. That's huge. That'll be a huge undertaking. But it is the last one that needs to be done. And I'd rather be prepared for the day that, that bridge moves than to not be.
Correct. You're absolutely correct. Because you're right, it's, I'd rather have the plan in the draw. Then when it starts moving, we can execute the plan versus start moving, now we have to rush and get it fixed and now it's a safety issue.
Isn't that what they're doing on the Washington Bridge in Rhode Island? I mean, now.
Exactly what I was thinking.
Now they're, they're just, they gotta design something. They're not even, you know what I mean? It's gonna take forever.
I mean, this is nine to thirty-six months as far as options of closing that intersection. That's a major disruption to our town, right?
Crazy, into the businesses, right?
God forbid it happens during the same time that the Chase Road Bridge is being done. We'll be essentially cutting off our town at both, at both directions. So having this planned out now for the rainy day is the way to do it. And that's, of course, that's the worst case scenario that we would avoid. But the only unknown here is whether it starts moving on us. Right? So thank you.
So I will, this will come back up at another meeting where we have further discussion or even maybe we do it when we do some of the Four Corners informational talks. So this, like I said, I just got this, so take a look at it. There's three different options in there.
Very well put together, this.
Yeah, it's a nice report.
I like it.
I haven't, obviously, I haven't looked at it. One of the things I did find interesting here is just this quick glance is option two says it's state and federally funded.
Because, so that's one of the discussions we talked about with, and I talked about with this Jim Noyes from GPI, like, it's great to get grants and you know, I'm that person, right? But sometimes the grants can really tie your hands because they say, you have to, you have to do, you have to do the bridge the way they say it. So they want a five, an eight foot sidewalk on each side, but we know how narrow the road is there.
And we don't have land, like, because it had to be the complete streets.
So it creates like a lot more work and a lot more permits. So it's not worth it. And I, when I got the grant for the bridge and when we were talking about getting the grant, because originally they had, they had, they said I was getting two point five million dollars. So it made sense to go with federal funding. Then they cut it down to a half a million. And I said, does it make sense? It may make sense for us to say, no, we don't want that grant because it will tie us to doing things that we really will struggle to do. We meant to do land takings and that's not included in the cost of the bridge.
If legal fees trying to, trying to empty domain.
It's gonna stretch out the timeline.
Right, exactly.
And the other part is not for nothing, I don't want to continue to drag this on, is putting that overlay over the top of it does leave the underneath of the bridge, which is a historical, and allows it to stay there. If it's cracking a little bit, then it's really not that big of a deal. It's not weight bearing, so.
We spoke with the engineers by adding the overlay on top. So if you're going down the road and, and Grampy's on the right, it could potentially add anywhere up to eight to ten inch lip.
Yes, that's in this report, you'll see. One foot, two inches, he said. So he says it's gonna be a little bit of a roller coaster there, but he thinks it'll be okay.
It's a real roller coaster as it is and it's flat. So enough to mention, there's a business right there and very little sidewalks. We may have to add sidewalks so that ru- water runoff isn't going into the business as well. So a lot to think about when.
There is. But he, this report, I shouldn't say he, because I, I think it, I think it was a woman that wrote the report. But this report lays out the pros and the cons very well. So I think, like I said, I'm gonna let you all sit with it. I'll get it to planning so they can look at it and even conservation. Because of course it's all protected area there. So there's a lot to dissect with this and I haven't had time to read the whole thing myself.
Thank you for getting it all to us.
Okay, water meter project, you know, we replaced all the water meters using Opera money. That project is done. So I just wanted to say that. It was, kudos to the water department who worked diligently to get this project done. It's working and working well. So that was a money well spent, I have to say. We found a lot of things that weren't being metered or wasn't being, you know, with broken meters. And now every, things that we didn't know where they were, we located them. So it was a great, it was, it was a great project. And it was a great thing to spend the Opera money on. Freetown Elementary's school solar project. So we've talked about this. You know, one of the things was there was a grant coming down to replace roofs. If they were gonna be solar ready, so we went with the Solar Select Company. So we had a company come out for free to do an assessment on the roof. Yes, so.
Looks like it needs some help.
I think, this is just a letter that came, the summary. Basically, the roof is twenty-three years old. It's made out of PVC. And prior to coming here, I looked at how long a PVC roof lasts for a commercial PVC roof. It said anywhere from like twenty-five to thirty years. So lo and behold, we need a new roof on the elementary school. That being said, I don't believe it leaks. I don't believe we have any issues that way. So upon getting this report, which of course they all just want me to do solar, I'm like, oh my goodness. I made a, I have a meeting tomorrow with Carl, the building commissioner, Greg Goodwin, who's the facilities and maintenance person for the school, and myself to look at this. And really, I really, I think this jarred a big concern of mine. I believe the elementary school, even though it's part of the district, is the responsibility of the town to maintain these big ticket items. So I am more concerned about what's not, what hasn't been done because we know that maintenance on buildings, municipal buildings has been lacking. So I really want to get a handle from Greg and, and our principal ward will be there about what this building might need over the next few years so that we can start to think about budgeting for these kinds of repairs. The first page of this just laid that you can do an overlay of this roof for about two million dollars. Or you can replace the whole roof for in excess of three million dollars, something like that. This fluid applied restoration thing that in the last twenty years will cost two million dollars. I'm, I'm gonna have some conversations about this. They do talk about doing an IR scan for five thousand dollars to really let us know the condition of the roof. So I might come back to you guys to ask for that money because I think that that makes sense to do at this juncture and really look at it. So, no, I, I, I'm, they just gave me this assessment, but I said, so I'm taking from this that we're not gonna put solar on this roof. So the solar roof really can't go on the roof until we deal with the roof, which we knew. But they're saying now the grant isn't coming out until two thousand and twenty-six and we should just take care of the roof now. Of course they are because they want us to put the solar on. I'm gonna vet that further. I just got this report as well. And then of course I was alarmed more. There's a lot of maintenance stuff that looks like.
Doesn't look great.
It doesn't look like anybody's really paying attention.
To your point, the facial board on the side of the paint is just, you know, non-existent.
That should have been, and so, you know, Carl's amazing to work with. He jumps right in with me. He's very knowledgeable. So with Carl, myself, and I think that Greg Goodwin is amazing. I think we'll get a good list of like, okay, these are the projects that really need to be addressed. And then we'll work together to get quotes and start putting together a five year capital improvement plan for the school. Because again, if we ignore this maintenance, the cost is just gonna be astronomical. And I'd like to start thinking about setting up either a stabilization fund where we just put so much money every year towards the repairs and maintenance of the school, so that when we get hit with a million or a two million dollar budget, we've got some money. But that'll be something we address with FinCom and the board a little bit down the line as we, our budget comes together. But I just, I'm a planner by nature and I've said that before, but these things to me, it shouldn't be a surprise that, oh my god, it's been twenty-three years and we need a new roof, like.
Twenty-five year roof.
We're just up there. And Greg's great at this job, like you said, you mentioned. Greg Goodwin is, I've had a pleasure meeting him and speaking with him regarding the school, especially FES. And I'm happy to hear that him and Carl are, and yourself are, are having these conversations regarding these schools. And, and you're right, maintenance, it's easy to ignore, right? And I'm glad it's being looked at.
So, and I don't know that, you know, I know Greg probably has, he probably already has something set up and a schedule made. I don't know. But like I said, I think there's that disconnect with the district versus the town, that, you know, we're responsible for this building. They're responsible for the rest of the buildings. And I want to make sure that that is true too. I want to look at, I looked at the regional agreement tonight and I didn't, I didn't lay it out there specifically. But I'm pretty sure we're responsible for all the repairs to this building.
Maybe they can use their A and D fund as well. I don't know, maybe an A and D fund, they can help fund some of it.
I don't think so. I think, like I said, that's for the district.
Wishful thinking, I'm just throwing it out there.
The old schoolhouse renovation project, which is what we, you know, we talked about working on that, getting a feasibility study. I haven't done the RFP, so that'll, I'll be working on that hopefully soon. The Sonnet Four Corners improvements, you know, we've come before the selectmen to go over what we do for our signal or our roundabout. So since then, we have had a mock roundabout done at the elementary school. We, we, it was, we, one of the days that the kids weren't in school and Christmas vacation. The engineers came out and drew the roundabout right on the ground and we brought in, Ken, K. Arizanis again, came with their trucks, their biggest truck, to make sure they could maneuver through it. Also the chief, both chiefs were there and Harry brought in, she, Ashley brought in some fire engines. And we manipulated through this roundabout and got it, tweaked it a little bit. They redid it. This is the re- relaying out.
Four, is that what we're looking at?
The roundabout, yep. And, and it works. So it seemed to work out in the field. What we're waiting for now is the final survey of the property owners, you know, the abutters, to see what the impacts will be. Because what you have in front of you, I think you might have two different ones. You have a smaller one and a larger one. I'd like to go with the larger one, but of course that one has more impacts to the abutters. But really only one corner, and of course it's, I think, St. Laurent's Corner. So I want to know exactly where the property line is and really look at the impacts before a final decision is made between the two roundabouts. At the end of the day, I mean, we, I mean, the, the traffic signal, those proposals have not changed. Although we do, we do believe the queuing is gonna be an issue with the traffic signal versus a roundabout. So I will say, I think the planning, that, you know, the town planner myself, Victoria and myself are leaning towards a roundabout and the engineers, but there, the signal isn't changed, it's not off the table. It's just I didn't, there was no updates about that. So right now I'm waiting for the final survey of the, the property line so we know exactly what impacts will be from either or. What, what should be done. Because one of them puts, I want to say maybe the bigger one, puts almost this right on Lindelain's like front lawn, like right up to her. It takes the stairs out of the house. I mean, that can't happen. So there are some tweaks that still need to be, you know, looked at.
What's the timeframe? Let's say the smaller one or even the bigger one, what's the timeframe? Like, is it six months, a year?
In terms of what?
Like building this out, let's say.
I don't think it will take long to build out, to be honest with you. I'd say it'd take a month to actually do the construction. I've been trying to make sure I vet every piece of this project because this is going to have a huge impact to people in town. And I want to make sure that people in town have the information to come to, you know, they, we had one information meeting. We're gonna have another one, I believe, in March. I believe it's even scheduled, but I can't remember the date. You wouldn't know the date, would you? So that they can have their input. You know, this is historical part of a sonnet. It's been this way for a long time. It's gonna be difficult for people to transition into the roundabout. So it's not something I've been overly rushing. There's a grant due in May that will pay for this, but I'm not rushing it. I think we need to make sure that we do as much outreach as we possibly can so that we hear everybody's concerns. Because you have one bite at this apple. If this is not done properly, it is not going to be good for anybody. I, I don't want to be sitting in my chair on the second floor of the town hall if this doesn't work when we, we implement it. So I am just taking time to make sure.
I think we could all say up here and say, no, you're absolutely correct. Take your, we already reached out to the abutters. We already reached out to town. We put some stuff out there. This needs to take as long as it needs to take to make sure we get it right when we touch it, right? There's something need to be done. I think the overall consensus is yes, something needs to be done at the Four Corners. Just because we have two roundabouts sitting in front of us does not mean that's the final design, right? So your input is gonna be needed, residents' inputs, right? It's gonna be needed at some point again. So stay tuned, we'll put this out there because this is your town. So I agree.
I, I want to say it might be March seventeenth, but no, it's not because I'm on vacation. That's why I'm saying it's March seventeen, I'm not here, so have at it.
March seventeenth, is that a St. Patrick's Day?
I don't know, I'll see if I can find it on my calendar. But that was sort of, I didn't want you to think it's not moving forward. It is, we're just vetting every piece of it and we want to make sure that we have a hundred percent of the information and it's correct information. Because right now they're giving us, you know, these are kind of the, the property lines. No, no, we need the exact property lines. We need to know, right?
And to your point, I just worry, you know, that we make sure that every neighbor knows exactly how this is impacting them, right? We don't want any questions from anyone saying, I didn't, or saying, I didn't know. We want to make sure we are clear and transparent day one.
Right. Like last time we, we sent out letters and we waited for them to come back to us, right? With questions and a lot of them sat here with us to discuss it. And we'll definitely do that, continue doing that to make sure that every step of the process, the residents, especially those that are directly impacted, know along the way, right? That's the, that's transparency at its best right there.
Right. So we will continue to do that. So this, you know, like I said, we'll take our time. I'm just looking at the calendar date, but I can't see it. And the last project, information, I think.
Big red.
Tuesday, March twelfth. Tuesday, March twelfth at six o'clock is what I have on my calendar for the Four Corners informational meeting. So I don't know if you have that. But I think that might be the meeting. Huh?
It is upside down, but.
This is the last project I have on my list. This is the last project I have on my list. There's other projects, but Four South Main Street, as you know, um it needs to be demolished at this point. We are, um and I say we again because Victoria from planning is uh sort of we work together to get some of this stuff done. We we are looking at grants. We think we have some grants. This building has asbestos in it. Because it's condemned and we can't go in it, we can't contain the asbestos, which means the whole building will be considered hot. Will be considered asbestos, which means the cost to demolish it and get rid of it is astronomical. Also, there's obviously a there's a foundation in the ground and I can't just leave an open hole. So it's not a matter of just demolishing the building and taking it out. I also need to fill in that ground hole. We are working on getting quotes. I believe Victoria and Carl again are going to meet uh somebody out there next Friday. To get, see if we can get a price. So far, we haven't been able to get anybody who will actually quote this. It's very difficult. You're gonna have to close the road or have some a lot of mitigation while they're doing it. It'd be quick. It doesn't take long to take a building down. But they gotta do it from the street. They've gotta have dumpsters ready to go. So you haul in in one at a, you know, very quickly. So as you fill one, you take it off and have another one ready to go there. And you have to make sure you don't hit one of the other buildings, so. You know, it's not gonna be inexpensive, but we are looking for grants that both me and Victoria each have one that we think will would pay for it. If we can get a quote from somebody. And then, of course, that's the site that we're hoping to put a submersible pump station for the sewer line, so it will be underground. And we've talked about some parklet ideas, uh Victoria and I, about putting a little park area there. With the possibility of moving the Veterans Memorial from across the street over to here. With some, maybe some even some historic data on, you know, plaques that just say there was war. There's been different battles fought right here in the center of a sonnet. Making it a little nice, not an eyesore, something that really benefits the center of a sonnet.
Like a historic society, like a historic area, right? Some of those houses are sixteen, seventeen hundred. The house across your street where Linda is, it's got the chimney with the black cop, but like. You're right, there's so much history in that little area. And unfortunately, for those paying attention, it got condemned because our inspector went in, found about three feet of standing water in the basement. Turn my damage about eighty percent of the building. You 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 can't walk in there. It's either gonna fall on its own or we're gonna knock it down.
Fell into the basement. So there's no, there's no, you really can't get in there.
That's cathedral ceiling.
It is. It's it's a nice habitat. You don't want them to find out what's living in there. So, yeah, that's where we're at with that. I just, I mean, I'm working on it diligently. Like I said, Victoria and myself are going two different angles in terms of grants. But we need to get someone to quote that job. That's about it. I um the only last thing on here is the ADA grant came through. We get the grant for the bathrooms. Not for the Lulu lift at the COA. So we're gonna um I I put a an email where the ADA grant came out so late. If they would, if they're gonna be able to give us an extension of time to get the work done. But if not, we're moving. We'll be moving on that one, that project, and it'll happen quickly. And there's a lot of logistics that will come up about that project. The Lulu lift, I'm trying to get the engineers to give me a quote so that maybe we, if the COA wants to go to town meeting and reallocate some of their money. To actually do the Lulu lift anyway, you know what I mean? So that they will be um accessible. Choose to do that. I don't know the cost right now.
Those are always expensive.
I think that's it. Any questions for me in terms of what I've been doing?
When you have time, I have not.
Okay, um so I was just wondering if you guys had a chance to meet with the finance committee about when you guys could have a joint meeting? So we could make a decision.
No, we can't meet with like, we can't meet with anybody, be open, open meeting law violation.
Last meeting.
No, so what I had said. We could put it out to the finance committee so that way you wouldn't have to keep coming back, right? No, no, that's good. But I I mean, as far as thinking, okay, it's gonna be on the agenda. I show up and they don't have a forum. So kinda what was discussed was if we need to find out when they can have a forum that co-lights with us. So that way we can all be together. So um I don't know if there's been any discussions as far as when that will happen, but.
Okay, do we know when we will find that out? Just cuz as you guys all know, I put in my letter of interest December fourth, the thirteenth. I went to FinCom meeting where I was under the impression that they did um refer me to you guys to be appointed. I know January eighth, um Trevor made some um defamatory comments about um how he felt about the stuff in November. Based on one article he read in the newspaper. Um he did that without you guys being present. So I asked you guys last time if you could vote without him since he already gave his vote. I understand finance committee didn't have the quorum present. And you guys said that you would figure out a meet a time that we could all meet to talk about this. It just seems like it's going on for a while. And I know a few people in the community has reached out saying that um there was an appointed position on five thirty one. For Kara. And that was on the agenda that you guys would meet. You guys had a joint meeting on six five, so that's only roughly a week. If we don't have an answer by this month, I don't wanna pressure you guys, but that's going on three months for an appointed position. And nobody else has put their letter of interest in it. It almost seems like a disservice, not only to myself, but to the residents. If we have an appointed position, I just don't. I don't wanna be a pain. And I know that's probably how I'm coming off, but it's just, I think you guys could all understand my frustration and the confusion on like. Why is this taking so long? And I don't, I just don't understand, I guess. And I don't wanna keep being a pain and come here every meeting. I will be here regardless if I'm appointed or not to every meeting because one, I am running for Board of Selectmen. Two, I do find these end meetings interesting, um which is, I know, a shocker. But I don't wanna keep having to message you guys or ask you guys here what's going on and when we're going to meet. I just feel like some communication would be appreciated and speed too, if possible.
I, Margaret French Finance, um I did receive the letter from Kayla. It did go to the finance committee. At the time, we were under the mistaken impression that. You that the Board of Selectmen was the appointing authority. We simply had a vote to recommend, not to appoint, because we didn't think we were the appointing authority. We forwarded that letter. It went to the Board of Selectmen in January. There wasn't, it 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 wasn't a good um time for the Board of Selectmen to vote. We found out afterwards that it was supposed to be a joint meeting. By the time I was made aware of that, I could not get a quorum for our last meeting last week. We stated that there would be another meeting this week and I was very clear I could not get a quorum this week. So we did tell Ms. Churchill last week that it would not happen this week. I do believe your next meeting, I was told, was February twentieth. So I'm working on having a joint meeting. We should be able to have a joint meeting then and we can vote on it then.
Right, and that's what I remember from last week as well. So let me go right back to what you were saying earlier. So thank you, Margaret. You and every other resident are welcome to come here regardless if you love the meetings or not. You're welcome to sit down and watch us talk and and enter and engage with us as needed, right? I think really this one with what I think Margaret just said is it really came down to timing and people and people's schedules just kinda gone the way. Yeah, right. There is, I know for a fact for myself and I can speak for everybody here, we have nothing personal against you, right? This is a, this appointment's happening like today, it happened, right? But that was because we hired somebody. So people can say a lot of things how in town and I and I get it. You you have a platform, people speak with you, which is great. This one really, it comes down to not meeting the quorum. Like the first meeting, I was away and then we came back, Trevor's away, then they couldn't make the quorum. And then I think last week we talked about was either the fifth, which is today, right? Today's the fifth, alright, today's the fifth or the twentieth, right? So that's in line with what we were saying. So, yeah, some were quick, some, unfortunately, this one took a little longer than than I expected.
Wanna say that too is I have three children. I totally understand people get sick. I was sick like the whole month of December. It was terrible. So I understand things happen and sometimes it takes a little longer than you want it to. I just, the reason I ask this is because I just don't wanna come the twentieth and then be in the same position that I was the three meetings before. And then be bugging you guys when you already have things to deal with. That's why I was more asking. It's like, is it going to be the twentieth?
I will, and that's why I said we would reach out, you know, I was kinda clear about that last time. You know, we'll we'll reach out to you and let you know, so that way you don't have to keep coming back because it is unfair to you.
Yeah, I'll be clear. I set the agenda, so on the twentieth, it will be on the agenda. And if we have a quorum, we will vote on it, right? I will give you that.
Is it in like an open meeting on this or cuz I know like Lakeville, for instance, which I know are free town, um they did like a private vote. Is this an open vote or a private?
It'll be open, right?
Open phone, has to be open vote.
It's a roll call vote.
You 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 have different options. I know of like with the um speaking, if there's anything like the school committee vote, there was a couple of different options where you could like. Vote different ways, but we've always kinda held it that we feel like everything we do should be open and transparent. So, you know, when we did the, when we did the vote with the school committee, we did it out in the open, right? So there's different options and that. So I'm assuming, I don't see why that would be any different.
Yeah, it'll be it'll be a open vote for sure.
And I actually, I have two more things to say, but um.
Is it relating to this thing?
It is.
Okay, cuz I was gonna say, I was gonna mention one thing before, but if you have questions relating this, cuz I was gonna say is regardless of our appointment for against, right? You still have to pull papers for the upcoming election. So so, okay, just making sure that that's clear and there's no, hey, you're there for a month and we're kicking you out. That's not the case. It's it's an elected position. The appointment is because we had a vacant um seat in that in that appointment, so. So let me sure we're on the same page. So you had two more questions?
Yes, and um I guess it's kinda three questions. So when you guys um are going over the agenda, is it better for you guys for me to write my questions down? And ask at the end or each item where I have a question, raise my hand?
Depends, right? So like technically, we're supposed to kinda stay on agenda, right? Like, so like if you if you have something specific that you wanna ask about something that we're talking about. I think at that time, we do have um kind of a open, what is it called? The public input part of our agenda now. So we added that so that people can ask questions at the end cuz previous to that, like you would, if it's not on the agenda, we're not supposed to talk about it. This public input kinda allows us a little more flexibility on that. But yeah, I mean, so you're saying like you have three, you had questions today that were relevant to specific agenda items that were in there in the agenda or?
Today, but I just, I didn't wanna be rude and like.
No, you just always raise your hand. No, it's fine. We wanna have a dialogue.
Absolutely. That's why the microphones are there for people to speak, right? So you have a question, you should ask the questions.
So the first question was, I know you said um F E S, you guys are gonna have the um the roof fixed with the solar panels. Is that correct at F E S?
I'm sorry, you what is your question? I can't hear you.
For the roof at F E S? You guys are gonna do the solar panels there, correct?
So we can't. I mean, the 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 roof assessment came back that the roof is in is not, doesn't have much longevity. So I haven't gotten a clarification, but from the roof assessment, I'm assuming we're not, it's not okay to put. You don't wanna put solar panels on there that are gonna last twenty years when the roof's only got two more years left.
That you are gonna fix the roof before.
That's the discussion, the plan.
We haven't made a decision. That's a two million dollar bill at the cheapest, right? And so there's a lot that goes into those decisions. I was just trying to get the board up to speed. So when I come to them and say, hey, I had a discussion and it looks like we're gonna have to spend two million dollars. Where, you know, I'm gonna, we're gonna have to put an article at town meeting to get funded for this project. They they, it's not coming from left field. You know, so that's the kinda stuff that I try to keep them up to speed on.
Now, the only reason I bring that up is cuz um the high school, it does leak. The stairs, um the kids actually, when I was there, said be careful up the stairs because we slip and fall constantly going up and down. And that was, has always been kind of a concern to me. What what is the plan for the high school?
I don't wanna. No, so that's in Lakeville and it's part of the joint schools, right? So that's separate from us. We're discussing Free Town Elementary because it's owned by Free Town. So that's really something that needs to go. Well, it's the it's the region. So it's not, it's not, uh that's not a Free Town decision for the three of us to sit up here and make.
I've tried to ask that question before and it, they tell me to contact you guys in the Lakeville B O S. So I feel like I'm getting a run around.
Well, the person in charge of all the schools, including F E S, A E S, uh intermediate school, middle school, high school. The person that reports to the school committee, superintendent and provides us information is Greg Goodwin. He's the facilities manager. He is looking at every school, every building, like for instance, take A E S, the doors and window project. He helps spearhead, make sure that that was, that's happening and continues to get to the end stage of getting brand new windows and doors, right? So Greg is the man. He's the guy that's going around and making sure that he's holding both towns accountable for the facility maintenance of all the schools. So at some point, he will release a report letting us know the status of everything that's going on in those schools. So we're, that's just time, time, right? At some point, he's gonna come out with it.
Now, when you get the status of the report, is that open to the public?
I'm sure it is. It's it's you, the residents own the schools, right? The school doesn't own it, the the residents, the taxpayers. So if we know it and it's not confidential in any way, right? Obviously, if we're not putting bank information on there. I'm pretty sure that's gonna be an open, well, not pretty sure, but fairly sure that it's gonna be open to the public, right? It's probably gonna be on the school's website before it's gonna be on our website, right? So but Greg will be the person through the school committee presentation, so I'm sure that's the the way they they work it. So but he is working with them with F E S. He's on top of it. Uh I keep Greg Goodwin every single piece of credit we can. He he's a great guy. He's doing everything he can for those schools, so.
And the last thing that I wanted to say is, I don't mean to put you out here like that, um Selectman Zager. But um so you said earlier about um the voting signs and um. You, I actually quoted, you said, people don't pay attention to signage. And this is going kinda in a different direction with this, but that kinda weighed with me. We had some weight. And it kinda brings me to what happened in November. We all know that I was invited and the video actually states that I was invited to go check the security and of course.
Don't wanna speak on that though. So if you're asking me a question directed at that, please don't because I won't, I won't answer.
So yes, I appreciate that. I won't. So I I was invited into the schools and um the signs didn't exist before I went into the schools. But from the community, I have heard a lot of people in which I also agree, um that the signs aren't enough. You said it yourself, people don't pay attention to the signs. And if your mind's not right and you're going to do something to commit harm to somebody. That sign is gonna be even more not noticeable. So I just, I have addressed my concerns in regards to safety since May of twenty two. And I re- addressed all those concerns to the school committee and it kinda fell on deaf ears. And I know this is a joint school committee uh between Lakeville and Free Town. And maybe it has to be a joint meeting, but I would like to see something done more in regards to school safety other than just a sign. If you're gonna commit a crime, you're, the sign doesn't mean anything to anybody.
I was speaking directly on, once again, I will not talk on that. I will speak on the box that I was talking about. And having signs on there about what to and not to put into the box. And sometimes if we post all sorts of stuff on it, people aren't gonna pay attention to it. As far as anything that you just spoke of, I refuse to comment on that. As far as whether, how you feel about that, I completely understand and that's great. But I'm I'm gonna talk about the box only.
I understand. And the only reason I brought up the the comment is because I think it stands true no matter what sign it is. And you guys are the selectmen. Um so I just would, I don't know who else to go to other than you guys. Because I've already went to the school committee, I already went to the police department. Signs aren't enough. So I would like all of us, if even if I'm not included, for you guys in the school and Lakeville to figure out something else. And I I did tons of research. I've called security departments. I've looked into, you know, what happens after a tragedy. Different blood clotting, chem- um medical equipment that you can use. I've done thorough research. I would be happy to help you guys make the school safer. I just, I I don't feel that the signs are enough and several community, community members don't feel that they're enough either. That's why I brought that up. And I think you don't have to comment, but I just, if you could keep it fresh in your mind, so when you do.
I just, I'm sorry, I wasn't, you know, I just wanted to make sure that I was very clear cuz I don't want you to think that I was trying to dodge anything or whatever. I just wanna be clear that.
I appreciate that. I think it's probably smart you don't comment.
And one of those things too for the signs, I look at the the bull ramp, right? I go to the bull ramp, there's a thirty thousand signs telling you to do ten thousand different things. So there there is, you know, there's over signage on things, right? So I think to the sign portion of things, right? Just discussion on the signs. Too many signs, people start looking at them, right? They kinda just kinda, they see it, yeah, yeah, sure. Heck, we have a a yield sign that people don't even look at, right? It's got lights on it now. It's blinking at you and it's still, people still don't look at it. So the sign thing is, you know, um. So the sign thing is, you know, um, too many, too much signage or not enough signage. This is, this is that balance, right? Almost like the three beers, right? You got to find the right balance to make sure that people are going to pay attention, but also not over invest their day into what's going on in that sign, right? It should be clear and cut. And as far as school safety, I will say this and only this, we are working on it. We've been working on it. It's just, it just takes time. All right? Um, that's all I'll comment on that. Our children's safety is paramount. And I will, we, of course, we can't discuss a million things on school safety because, for that purpose, but we are working on it. It's in the background.
I just have, this is the last thing I promise. Um, so I, are you guys aware that over the summer when if, um, excuse me, um, AES was putting in the new windows, ass wants it out of your school, as you know.
Oh, yes.
Um, so I won't name the name um, of the person, but a community member went to um, the elementary school to just check out how the windows were going. Cause I know we had a scare of them not being in time. At one point they were, they didn't, they thought that they might have to.
Like anything else in the world, supply and demand, um, it's.
Right. No, and I understand. That's, that's not even really the big part of this whole thing. So when she went to um, check and make sure that all the windows were installed, she noticed a door open. She video recorded this and opened the door and nobody was inside. She, you know, yelled, is anybody in there? Thinking maybe a teacher, a custodian, maybe came out real quick to throw trash and then that's why the door was open. Nobody was there. She called the police department. And the police officer came down, was very rude to her and told her that, um, to not make this public because they didn't want another person to bring to light a security issue. The door was closed and that was it. And that's where um, it just, that scares me because if you guys have done your research into Uvalde, that is how the shooter got in.
Sure, but you said Lakeville.
Hey guys, I, I, I have, I haven't seen my son yet today. I gotta get home. We're not going to solve these problems today. I understand, but I'm going to wrap up the meeting here. It can be sign, Luann.
Hold on. So you're stopping public comment?
I am stopping public comment.
If it's past your bedtime, you should not be a selectman.
I'm the chairman. I can stop public comment.
Right when Trevor says so.
I, that's how being a chairman works, actually.
Okay. I'll mention that to my lawyer. Thank you.
Please do. Thank you.
And I did have that, Miss Kitty, I don't know if I invested a typo, so do you mind if Dev signs off?
That's fine. So I just sign, do I just sign anyways?
That's sure.
Thank you.
A two, a two pager? That's it?
That was it?
Making your day come.
All right, good. So with that, um, I will introduce a motion to adjourn.
Motion made. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.